I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of June 18th, 2020, to order at 6:00 PM and ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gundy?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Addington?
Here.
Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo's absent tonight. Trustee Little?
Here.
And Trustee Nero?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
All right. We're going to waive the pledge of allegiance and move on to the open forum. Manager May, you have any comments?
Let me just check once more. There are no submitted comments.
No submitted comments, okay. Then we will move on to reports. My report is first. Virtual village meetings were still, as you can see, were still. Village continues to hold various meetings via teleconferencing until July 16th. Prior to the start of each meeting, citizens can use the online public comment form at westmont.illinois.gov/meaninginfo to submit their comments and feedback. I'd like now to invite Chief Gunther talking about the policing update and the joint statement that we released this week. Is Chief Gunther with us?
He's online.
There we go. Is that better?
Yes.
There he is.
I forgot that I have to hit two buttons, both the start video and unmute, so now I'm good. Thank you, Mayor. We've had several residents and community members contact the mayor and myself over the last few weeks about the civil unrest that has gripped the country. And we put out a joint statement last week, the village webpage and the police and village Facebook pages, which has received overwhelmingly strong support through emails and voicemails and letters that have come directly to me. We've taken the opportunity to answer community members' questions. I've spoken to two people over the phone this past week and answered questions of concern and favorable outcomes with that. In the last two days, we've spent with accreditation managers onsite, checking the department for their policies and procedures and watching the way we operate. They left today with a very favorable opinion of the Westmont Police Department. We will give an explanation from ILEEP, which is run through the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association, and we're looking forward to making a presentation in the next couple of months in front of the Village Board, hopefully when we're all back into the same room. So we keep our lines of communication open. We are full transparency and we look forward to engaging with the community even more moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. Any board members got a question for Chief? Seeing none, then I'm going to call Chief Riley to give an update on the COVID-19.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we hopefully progress here into Phase Four in about a week or so, I can tell you that Westmont is doing pretty good with our residents in the nursing homes and congregate living facilities. Unfortunately, as of today, we've had 63 deaths between the four nursing homes and one congregate living facility. We've had 432 deaths in DuPage County alone. Currently, the fire department is without one member right now due to no secondary employment. But we continue to strive and continue to protect the citizens of Westmont to the best of our ability, and we look forward to moving forward to Phase Four. If there's any questions, I can answer for you, Mayor, or from the Village Board.
Any questions?
I guess I can add a little bit, too. The Phase Four he's talking about is, of course, the Restore Illinois, move into Phase Four, the plan from the governor's office. We're in Phase Three and certain regional, I'll just call them, lump them all together as metrics, have to be met in order to qualify to move into Phase Four. What does that mean? It means there's more abilities to move away from the, I'll simplify it and say, the stay-at-home order, so that there could be more activity in the retail spaces, the amount of population able to congregate together at the same time, goes from 10 to 50 people. There'll be more, you know, with the Phase Three, it was very exciting when we got, the restaurants got to reopen, but it was all exclusively outdoor dining, and now they'll have the opportunity to do that. So that will be, we're on target to move into Phase Four on Friday, June 26th, and that's just the target. We're still, it's still the governor's office to declare, and with that will come additional guidelines on how to proceed with these new permissions and abilities.
All right. Now I'd like to call upon Larry Forsberg to add some additional information on the community business update and mention your raffle. It's still being extended.
Thank you, Mayor, and Village Board members. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to do that. Touching on the business community, as Manager May and Chief Riley just noted, everybody's getting ready to move into Phase Four, the revitalization portion of the COVID-19, the Restore Illinois Plan, which is hopefully going to take effect next Friday. And basically what that means is our nonessential businesses will all be open, our bars and restaurants will be open, our personal care and health clubs will be more accessible and open, entertainment such as theaters and cinemas will be able to open. So we're going to see a lot more activity. It truly will be a revitalization of what's going on in the business community right now. And again, as Manager May had mentioned, the guidelines that will give the direction needed to make all these things happen, hopefully will be released in the next few business days, and we'll all be working to partner with our business community to put those into place and keep everybody in the community safe and to keep the team members at the businesses safe. So we're hoping that all is going to come along very quickly next week, and there's a lot of excitement behind that. I will mention that the raffle that's been going on, the mega raffle, is continuing through next Wednesday. We have 30 businesses participating. Raffle tickets are $10, are available at westmontchamber.com. There'll be two grand prize winners. Each one of the grand prize winners will receive $4,500 in gift certificates from those 30 organizations that can be used from late this year through all of next year. And so, and every, all the proceeds, 100% of the proceeds, will be shared with those 30 participating businesses at a time where they could really, really use the help. So we want to encourage everyone to buy a ticket or two, please. And just again, a reminder, shop dine, discover Westmont now especially more than ever before because the needs that our business owners have to survive this, the challenges that have been presented by COVID-19. So thank you for the opportunity to share those, that information. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Moving on, I'd turn to Clerk Simmski for her report.
The garage sales are now permitted and no permits are required. The community-wide garage sale will be August 7th, 8th, and 9th, and no permit is needed for that. People can sign up through the village website. And the other good news is the Westmont Library is planning to reopen to the public in July. Look for details to be published on the library website, and that's all I have. Although it's nice to, I want to wish Marie Guzzo the best, because she had knee surgery, so we miss her. We'll be glad when she's back. And Jim, we're thankful you are back, and take care of yourself, okay? And that's all.
And again, I think we all wish Marie, with her replacement, knee replacement, will see her next meeting. And I'll ask Trustee Nero to give an update.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things from my side. Before this meeting, we had our regularly scheduled Public Works Committee meeting, and just a few things that we ran through. I think first and foremost, we announced three 20-year plaques of our employees that have been with us for that long a period of time, Frank Coolis, Jim Kates, and Jeff Bond. We wanted to special thanks to all three of them, and we appreciate everything that they've done for this village and their dedication and all the important roles that they've played to become a Public Works team, so we thank them for that. We also had a virtual tour, which is of our new Public Works facility. So that was really exciting to see that shape up, what it looks like. The rumor is our next Public Works meeting at the time for may be held in the new facility. So we'll see if we can stick to that and make that happen. That'd be really exciting. A couple other big things you may have noticed, some workers, the Public Works employees taking a stab at surging coals throughout town that we're repairing, so we thank them for getting out there and maintaining the stormwater system, which is as important as you ever can imagine. Update on some trees. So far, we have 130 trees planted here to date. I know there's a few more on Pass Quinelli that we have to get in, but we'll, I'm sure we'll get those relatively soon. Well, number 13 is completely gone, and now a gravel pad, which is great. We had to have, we had to install a few water sampling sites, and I thought that was so important. Chair Mayor, you know, during COVID, a lot of the business sites have been stormed down and mandate staff to put some habitual tests in these sites, which we didn't have access to. So our water department worked with other entities that we did have access to, and we installed a few new sites to keep up the speed on that. Moving on to engineering, we discussed the new Lincoln parking lot project, the Ogden Avenue medium project. I know these are all high priority items and a lot of interest in the community. The Ogden Avenue medium project should start relatively soon. We're just waiting on our friends at IDOT to finalize the permit. And before I do pass, I just want to also give an update on our model water tower competition. Mike shared a little update on that. We did have a good turnout with 16 finalists, and we just have, the state championship will be hopefully held this fall where we can crown the champion on that. And our high school operator and training program. We do have one student, Matthew Hayden, who's completed the program, thanks to Mike Rans, who are Public Works Director, has passed his first exam, and the EBA exam will be up next. So another good success story with that operator and program training program that Mike does. So that is all I have, Mayor. I do have one more, two more items. I apologize. I was way off. But adopt a planner program. Seen residents and businesses already have adopted them. Thank you very much. Thank you to Chad DeRees of Public Works for helping us coordinate. The village will place an adoption sign in each planner identifying the residents and businesses that did sponsor a planner, so please still take advantage of that. We appreciate everybody participating and helping out. And then last but not least, I just wanted to pass a message along, and you know, when we have a live meeting, I'll show you a person, but it's just an excerpt from the Downers Grove Township Assessor's Office. There was a new act that was recently signed, and I'm going to read this, that allows the automatic renewal of 2019, of the 2019 senior priests, disabled veterans, and disabled persons exceptions for the 2020 assessment year without a renewal from the taxpayer. So a little different this time around. DuPage County will be sending a letter to all 2019 applicants of those exemptions explaining that a renewal is not required this year. So if you haven't seen your priest already, there's no need to fill out a form this year. This will automatically be rolled over to the 2020 tax year. So I thank Greg Bolts, our assessor, for passing that on, and he also wanted me to let everybody know that the office does have curbside assistance. Should anybody would like to take advantage of it, you can call the office directly at 630-719-6630. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Little?
Thank you, Mayor. The next administration finance committee meeting will be held July 2nd at 4:30. Hopefully, we'll be back in the village building. Next item is the Taste of Westmont. This year, the Taste of Westmont will go virtual due to the COVID-19 and related challenges. Westmont Special Events will not be able to have the usual Taste of Westmont on Cass Avenue, but we're planning to have a virtual taste in which the typical Taste of Westmont restaurants, businesses, and sponsors will have a chance to promote their businesses and offer specials. So look for details coming out soon. There won't be a cruising night in June with closing off Cass Avenue and parking cars, but I'd like to call on Larry McIntyre at this time to give a brief talk of what we're planning.
Thank you very much. The mayor had asked me to take a look at what other communities are doing with their cruising nights, so we talked to quite a few different municipalities, including Lyle, Lamont, Downers Grove, Villa Park, Cozy Corners, and got some good information about what some other communities are doing. As Manager May mentioned earlier, we're probably moving into Phase Four about a week and a half from now, and with that, the guideline states that you are not supposed to have gatherings of more than 50 people. So we're trying to figure out a plan of how we try to have cruising nights but also meet state guidelines. And here's what we are considering. This is not really a formal proposal at this moment, but it's more of a sharing of ideas. But the thought might be, starting in July, we invite classic car owners to come to downtown Westmont on Thursdays, as they normally do on, between 5:00 and 9:00 PM. However, we would not close Cass Avenue, and classic cars would be allowed to just use normal on-street parking and parking lots. And so that way, people are just kind of doing their own thing rather than it's more of a coordinated event like our typical cruising night. In addition, there would be no street closures whatsoever, no bans, no entertainment, no vendors, no alcohol on the streets. But as we invite the classic car owners to come to downtown Westmont, we would encourage them to be, to give patronage to our downtown businesses, so therefore supporting our downtown business community. And then additionally, we would encourage classic car owners to cruise up and down Cass Avenue and throughout town, and that's kind of actually the way original cruise nights were started. It was really about getting in your car and driving around and showing off your car. So it's sort of a throwback to the old days of how cruising nights came about, but that would be the idea. And then once again, we would encourage people to follow Phase Four guidelines, which would include the use of masks and social distancing. And none of the items that I just mentioned would actually require use of right-of-way, so we're thinking this would not require a special events permit request. So it might be something that we just kind of put the publicity out, once we have agreement on the details, and then see who shows up and then kind of monitor this. I've had a chance to talk with staff and members of the WSCC about this, and so far, everybody's in favor of it, but we are looking for feedback from everybody because maybe there's something missing, or something we've overlooked, but that's kind of where things stand at the moment.
Mayor, that's all I have at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any of the trustees have a question about the proposed cruising nights? Seeing none, I'll move on to, as we said before, Trustee Johanna Guzzo is not with us tonight, but she would mention that the Public Safety Committee next meeting will be August 27th at 4:30 PM. And now I'll ask Trustee Barker for an update.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things regarding Westmont first. The Hope Merrill Project will be featured on the next edition of Neighbor's Magazine. It'll be featured on the cover, and we're getting a lot of interesting participation in that. We're asking residents to submit artwork, inspirational writing, and other media and take part in this effort. And there's additional information on the village website about the Hope Merrill Project, and we're, you know, it's a very worthwhile event and cause, and the slogan there is "It's okay to not be okay." But we're excited about being able to promote that, and we feel that it's going very well. The census work at Westmont first, we're pushing, we're almost to 71% participation there. At this time, we're just asking everybody to reach out to their friends and family and see if they've made their response yet, because we all know how important that is to our community. Reach out to your friends and on social media and your neighbors and see if they have just put that off a little bit too long and ask them to participate. With the Environmental Improvement Committee, I'm just going to jump back in on something to turn here.
Bruce, question? What's the, what's the deadline on the census?
Trustee Addington, I know the deadline has moved, and I'm not sure that I have a good answer for that, but we will get that to you.
Yeah, just for curiosity.
Yeah, I know they have more, the work that they would do on the streets, going door-to-door has been put on hold, and we hear that that's going to start, but it's such a late start. I've got to say that it was pushed almost to the end of the year. If not, the conclusion would be early next spring, but I'll get with Jenny, and we'll get that out to everybody, so we have some more details. All right? And then the Environmental Improvement Committee, going back to what Trustee Nero said, you know, we've took, made the effort to plant all these trees, and because it had rained in April and May, and now the water has turned off, and we need everybody to go out and make an effort to water these parkway trees, so village staff doesn't have to do it. It increases the value of your home, it's good for the environment, so please make an effort to take care of those trees. And then we have, haven't had an EIC meeting, but we are talking about what we can do in the future as we enter Phase Four. But I am excited to report that the mayor was able to participate in a video from the Morton Arboretum. It was featured along with the village on the importance of trees in your community. That video is available at the village website. And also, I have another video to share. We had a Westmont resident, Louise Kelly, who went to Smith Woods in the springtime, and she set up a camera every day and took a picture from the same location. This was an area in Smith Woods where the park district had removed a bunch of invasive plant materials, and that was reseeded with wildflowers, woodland wildflowers, and she took pictures of that emerging in the spring and put together a very beautiful video of time-lapse photography set to music of the, you know, snow going away and the color coming back and the flowers coming up over there in Smith Woods. We'll also make that available to everybody through the village website. That was a local resident that took, that went the extra mile and really showcasing something behind the scenes on how the park district and the village with John Yader and the Environmental Improvement Committee, you know, looked to beautify our community. And we wanted to congratulate her on that effort, and we'll make that available if you all proceed. That is all I have.
Well, thank you. And I do have to comment on Morton Arboretum. The reason I was asked is because this community and the boards through the years have been real supportive of planting trees, and we've been real fortunate to have John Yader as our representing Westmont. So that's the reason they asked me, because our community seems to be following all the goals that they set out. Trustee Addington?
Had to figure out on unmute. Okay. Lots of things to talk about tonight. First one is, to get a real positive out of the way, last Monday, the Westmont Lions Club, which has been collecting money, delivered to PRC a hundred mixed non-perishable food baskets. And we're planning on doing more, and of course, PRC is looking for all the assistance they can get to help families in need during, during what's going on with people not working and everything else. Also, we have now amassed a couple of thousand gloves, masks, and hand sanitizers, which we're going to try to pass out for free at various places within the community over the next couple of weeks. So we're doing everything that we can to assist the community during this time, and I know it's, we're going to continue, so any assistance anybody can give us, of course, we'll appreciate. The next thing is that community development. Somebody want to say something? No, okay. The next one is community development, which will be meeting on July 16th at 4:30, and I don't think I'll be there that night, so somebody will have to take over for me. But there's a lot going on, and let me try to recap a little bit of what's going on with them. First of all, there's a meeting of planning and zoning, and I believe that's July 8th. Am I correct, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And they're going to continue with the hearing about the proposed development, private development at One North Cass. That's a seven-story mixed-use building. I say private development because I have, I cannot believe some of the things that I've seen or have been talked to me about that are so off the wall. I mean, I've heard, I think, 11-story buildings, 17-story buildings, just all kinds of things. The development is proposed, it is not yet approved, and anyone who has any feelings one way or the other about this development, they really should come to planning and zoning. That's the place for them to give their testimony pro or con, because planning zoning is the one where they take testimony and will make a recommendation to the village board. So I would stress to everyone that they try to get to the meeting on July 8th, and I think, Steve, in some of the responses you've made to citizens, you suggested the same thing. So the other stuff that's being worked on is Nature's Best has asked for a new parking lot with, that has to do with finding a place for their employees. There's a text amendment that'll be up in front of planning and zoning to help with these larger office buildings who want to have an ancillary deli slash restaurant-type property. And then there's also some additional work being done at the Bacon Building at 700 Oakmont. It's also on the agenda. So there'll be a lot of things on July 8th, and...
Trustee Addington, that July 8th will be held at the high school auditorium, Westmont High School?
Correct.
So just, just want to mention that.
Yeah. So that way, you can keep the social distancing and at the same time, be there in public to give your testimony. And that's the place to do it, is go to the high school and get sworn in and give your testimony so that they have it on record. And then the outdoor seating, which has turned out to be, I think, fairly successful. I think we ended up, as of now, with 12 restaurants that were approved to do the outside seating. Las Palmas has reopened with their patio, so that's great news from them. them. And then, uh, just a lot, a lot of development is continuing to go forward, uh, both downtown with One West Quincy. That project has started. The nettorium should be winding down for a ribbon cutting sometime this summer. I'm not sure if there's any dates been set yet, but the new medical facility, uh, on Ogden, um, I see that the, uh, the, uh, steel is up and they're working on it along with, uh, the Dream House project on North Cass and several others. So, a lot of positives, a lot of good development, um, in Westmont, you know, a lot of increased property value. So, that's all real good and, um, that's all I have, sir.
Well, thank you.
A lot.
And I'll turn to Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Jim kinda took away, uh, some of my, uh, highlights there. So, I was gonna call Larry up, uh, to kinda go over some of the updates and, and if there's something we missed at the end, we, we will have Larry, uh, do that. But just wanted to piggyback on what Jim was saying, that these developments are really moving forward. Uh, we've seen, you know, Quincy Street has, has expanded now to the park. Uh, I also wanted to throw in there that, uh, around the Miller School area, uh, you know, Trowby and, and Washington, it's almost like a new subdivision over there. There's so many new homes going around and, you know, really overall, uh, improving the, the area. And, uh, of course, when they build these new homes, they're, they're not building small ranches. They're building, you know, high tax revenue homes and, and they look beautiful. It's an improvement to the community. Uh, and, you know, Sixty-third Street is moving right along. I, I drove the parking lot last night. I mean, everything is dangerously close to, to moving forward. And lastly, I, just on One North Cass, um, I, I, I had a conversation with a very active, uh, community member the other day and they were comparing, uh, Clifton Hills has a candy store. And we were talking Clifton Hills downtown and I was explaining to them how easy that is with just a half block, the one block where we all know our story where we're so expanded. Well, they, they said, we need to get that candy store like that. And, you know, we explained the old story that goes back to the strategic plan and, and the community's input that we have to get this transit orientated design going to support those type of stores. Uh, no one in, in, probably on the board or anywhere would like, you know, I would love to have Little Bucky back and Ben Franklin, but those days are gone. So, if we're gonna want these type of candy stores and other stores, we need the people to support it. If the people don't want it, we'll just live with Westmont the way it is downtown. But that's the real struggle out there and is we can't have, we can't have it both. And it's the same thing that all of us as village officials and the mayor and the manager, we all deal with it. We'd love to keep our community always the same way it is, but that isn't in the best interest of being progressive and for our children. So, uh, Larry, if there's anything else that we missed between Jim and I, please chime in. And if not, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Barry and then Trustee Addington, I believe you both cover the development aspect very well. There's projects going on in all sectors of the community right now and there are active discussions for future projects. So, you've got it well covered. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Trustee Barry. I'm gonna turn back to Manager May. Uh, we had some exciting news from the county. They haven't voted on it yet, but, uh, I'll let Manager May explain what, uh, the process will be.
Yes, the, uh, and actually, if I could, before I start that, just so I don't forget, the answer to the census question is the new deadline by the U.S. Census is, um, is pushed to October thirty-first is the new deadline. You don't want to wait till October to fill out your, um, census information, but if you do, the census takers have to go door to door, um, and follow up on that. So, they'll be knocking on your door, looking for account and candy, uh, all at the same time. So, best to get it done, uh, you know, in advance. The mayor was referring to, um, county, well, well, why the county? That we're talking about the, the CARES Act, the federal funding that was, uh, issued, um, nationwide for, uh, you know, to combat some of the burden or expenses that have to do with, uh, dealing with COVID-19 pandemic. The federal funding to help, uh, offset those costs, uh, the money was distributed by the federal government directly to the states and in some cases, uh, counties of a certain size, uh, got their own individual dispersment. Uh, why is that important? Is that, um, and, and this is really an update for the Village Board. The, the, the public, I guess, doesn't need, um, isn't as interested in the, you know, the details of how this gets dispersed, but the state of Illinois decided when they were, um, uh, when they met last month that they were setting aside a certain amount of that money to be distributed to the municipalities of Illinois, a certain pool of money dedicated for that purpose. Uh, they have, there are other expenses that they have, but, uh, that's what they did. And then they voted except for communities that are in counties that received their own CARES Act distribution, which is DuPage County and all the collar counties of Chicago, uh, you know, got their direct allocation. So, they decided on their own that we were to go to the county to seek our, um, to seek our reimbursements for that. So, that, uh, both took, uh, every municipality and the county itself a little bit off guard, but, uh, working closely with DuPage County, the communities together, um, uh, met with the individual, um, county board members and they had their finance committee this past Tuesday where they, uh, agreed or decided to recommend. It still has to be approved at a, at a county board level, but at least the finance committee agreed to set aside a, an amount of money that would be equivalent to the amount of money that it would have been if we went through the state of Illinois, um, roughly fifty dollars per person, per population. It isn't based on population, but, uh, the allocation will set our maximum reimbursement at that allocation. We still have to justify, uh, you know, all the expenses, but we should be able to recover all of our commodities, be in the PPE, equipment, um, you know, the disinfectant, um, items that we got, uh, uh, fire department, public safety and, uh, more than likely the, uh, the investments we made or chose to make, but, uh, that, you know, to help the local businesses, uh, little, you know, the assistance we tried to give them for their, for their, we described the Phase Three recovery earlier and there were some costs that came with that that we bore, uh, to not further aggravate the, uh, local businesses. So, those should all be, uh, you know, recoverable and, um, you know, we will be applying for those. So, that, it's good news that, uh, access to that funding, uh, has been defined and recommended. Uh, still have to work out the details about how to actually get it in hand.
But amounts to like one point three million for Westmont that can be reimbursed and we're still working on if the staff, um, first responders, uh, salaries can be included.
Public safety.
Public safety. So, uh, I think it's great news. Uh, I don't know if anybody has a question. Seeing none, then I'll move to items to be removed from the consent agenda. Does any board member see anything they want removed? Hearing none, I'd ask Manager May to read the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first on the consent agenda are Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting that was held on June fourth, 2020. It's followed by Finance Ordinance Number Three and the amount of one million, eight hundred, one thousand, three hundred, fourteen dollars, sixty-one cents. We have several, we have four purchase orders. First one is Imperial Service Systems, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, this represents, this is a, an annual purchase order for all the cleaning services that go with the, uh, Village Hall and other, um, public works facilities. So, it's a, an encumbering purchase order for the entire annual amount. Uh, I don't know if I mentioned the amount, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Second purchase order is DuPage Metropolitan Enforcement Group or DuMec as we know it, twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars, and that represents the annual dues payment for that organization. Next is Willsburg Kelsey Engineering LLC, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents. That represents the construction engineering services related to the Sixty-first Street in Richmond Stormwater Improvements, which is the, um, uh, the open dry detention basin that was described in more detail at the Public Works Committee earlier this afternoon. Last purchase order, Ncap, hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and two dollars. Uh, this is the physical construction of that improvement at Sixty-first in Richmond. That brings the total of those purchase orders to two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, fifty cents. And the total of purchase orders with Finance Ordinance Number Three is two million, seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and eleven cents. We have one proclamation. Uh, we tried to acknowledge, uh, this earlier while it was ongoing, but the proclamation itself represents, uh, Graduate Recognition Month. Board to consider a proclamation to declare the month of June as Graduate Recognition Month in the Village of Westmont for all of its graduates at any grade. That completes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve as read, Little.
Second, Barry.
Motion been made in second. On the question. I do have to come on the proclamation for the Graduate Recognition Month. We also, the Village also, uh, put up four or five signs congratulating throughout town, are, are congratulating all our graduates. Seeing no other, I'll ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. Five thirteen Rivera Avenue, Floor Area Ratio Variance. Board to consider ordinance approving a zoning code variance to increase the floor area ratio to allow the second-story expansion of a residential property at five thirteen Rivera Avenue. Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, this is a request for a variance from floor area ratio regulations. Real briefly, there's a variety of rules that limit how big homes and buildings can be on lots. Some of them are very straightforward and easy to understand, like height limits, setback requirements, et cetera. This is one that we use all the time, but you maybe don't hear about it too much. But it's a limit on how big a house can be relative to the size of the lot that that house is on. And it usually doesn't come into play because setback requirements and height requirement or limits and, uh, impervious coverage limits typically are the ones that limit the size of a structure. In this case, Christopher Lavoy owns a pie-shaped lot and because he's trying to do an expansion of the house, he has bumped into that floor area ratio limitation. And he's requesting a variance that would allow him to put an addition on so that the size of his house relative to the lot would be slightly larger than what our rules allow. Plan Commission reviewed it, had a public hearing. They voted to recommend approval. And if it's acceptable to the mayor, he has prepared a very brief statement that he's asked me to read.
Go ahead.
So, this is from Chris Lavoy, the property owner and the applicant. "Our package that we submitted to you is comprehensive and is self-explanatory. Our goal is to expand our home to live more comfortably and to have more space for our entire family. We have spent a great deal of time planning this project and due, due to the small size of our pie-shaped lot, we have limitations on expandability. The truth is that if we lived on a larger lot in Oakwood, we would not need any variation at all. Our project meets all other zoning criteria, including setback dimensions and maximum building height. We have investigated other renovation projects in Oakwood and it appears that FAR is exceeded in other examples." And then he cites some other examples in the Oakwood neighborhood. And then lastly, he says, "We believe that our project fits into the neighborhood nicely and sets an example for what could be done with this particular model of home in Oakwood. We have reached out to our neighbors and we have been well-received. We have been complimented on several occasions. We have also received some signatures supporting our request, which have been submitted to village staff. We have also submitted the project information to the Oakwood Homeowners Association and to date have not received a response. Our intentions are to stay in Westmont for years to come, uh, if our taxes don't go through the roof. We kindly request your approval for this floor area ratio variation."
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Nero.
Second, Nero. Uh, motion been made in second to approve. On the question.
If I may-
Manager May.
I have a question, uh, just for qualification. You, you called it a, a building addition, but this is not a change in the footprint of the building. It's all second-floor work. So, the addition is the, the expansion of se- second-floor access. It still affects the floor area ratio, but, um, not the actual footprint of the building. Is that correct, Bruce?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'd ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
I think he said yes.
That was a yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business B, Professional Services Agreement, Safe Built Illinois LLC. Board to consider ordinance approving a professional services agreement between the Village of Westmont and Safe Built Illinois LLC. And I'd ask Fire Chief Riley to give some more information.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, with the retire, recent retirement of Fire Prevention Bureau Director Larry Kaufman, uh, Fire Department is requesting the Village Board approval of Professional Services Agreement to outsource Fire Department Plan Reviews. Just a little more information, uh, myself or any of my staff do not have the certifications due to sprinkler reviews, so we're looking to move, uh, and have this contract in place with Safe Built. I'll be happy to answer any questions that any of the board may have.
And I want to just add one qualification, too, that this is also in keeping with the hiring freeze that we put into place. So, we need to outsource this, uh, responsibility for lack of other options.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barry.
Motion been made in second to approve the agreement. Uh, comments?
Uh, Mayor, just a quick comment. Due to a, a potential personal conflict, I'll be recusing, uh, from my vote tonight.
Okay. Seeing no other, I'd ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero. He recused himself. Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, Don Morris Architect Contract Amendment. Board to consider ordinance to amend the fee structure of the contract with Don Morris Architects to reduce the amount billed for a commercial plan exam. Director Sylvester.
So, in my year and a half here, I've heard several concerns that perhaps the fees that our consultants at Don Morris Architect charge the cities were on the high side and particularly for projects, uh, larger projects, um, larger commercial projects. And the reason for that is that the current fee schedule is a flat percentage based on the cost of construction. So, I discussed this concern with the representative from Don Morris Architect. We discussed some alternatives and some revisions to the fee schedule that would basically have a stepped scale so that, uh, the fee would remain unchanged for less expensive projects, but more expensive projects would be, their review fees would be less, uh, the larger the project got. I discussed that with Steve May and, uh, he agreed that it was a, a good step in the right direction and that is what is being presented to you tonight for approval.
Yeah. I would say not less in total, but less it, it steps down as the value of the project gets bigger.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barry.
Motion been made in second to approve the contract amendment. On to question.
Just a comment, Mayor. I wanted to thank you. I think it was a few months back when I approached you and brought this to your attention on how the fee schedule wasn't the most favorable for the permitees. So I'm glad to see us correcting this. It is a good improvement. I think we could still do better, but I appreciate everybody taking care of this. This is a good win, I think, for the development community in Westmont. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing it to our attention so we could research it. Any other comments? I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
New business D, no solicitor's ordinance amendment. Board to consider ordinance amending Chapter 22, Article 4, Division 4 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances to address no solicitor signs for charitable religious solicitation. And I'm going to ask Manager May to give some additional information.
Yes, thank you. This is a follow-up to the conversation we had about solicitors before, where actually at that time, we discussed the hours of solicitation, but it was brought up that it may apply differently for, you know, depending on the type of the organization doing the soliciting and their respective rights. This amendment makes the no soliciting feature apply to not-for-profits and the religious solicitors in the same way it would for anybody else when they display the no soliciting sticker. So this is more of a definition of how it, you know, this is the intention of the resident who's posting no solicitor, that it applies to both, and this enables that to be enforced or enacted.
Attorney Zemanek, do you have anything to add?
No, just that at Manager May's request, we performed some legal research to make sure that residents can in fact prohibit charitable or religious solicitations on their property by posting a sign. The answer is yes, they can, but it does have to, that prohibition has to be in an ordinance, so this accomplishes that.
Got it. And could Manager May, do you know offhand the hours of, that we set for solicitation?
I do not remember. I remember, I do not remember.
Okay. Probably in the minutes.
Yeah, was it just the last meeting?
I believe it ended at 5:00.
Well, I just was curious.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We'll find it and send it out to everyone. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barry.
Motion been made in second to approve. On to question. Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Trustee Addington looks frozen on his, come back to him after.
He said aye.
Okay.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
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 Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. Trustee Addington only can vote once, so.
I think he might have had help.
Miscellaneous, anybody else have any comments or information you'd like to share with the board?
Congratulations, if you wouldn't.
Trustee Barker.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Two things. One is, do we know the, I believe we have two vendors that run trucks through town, one of them being an ice cream truck. Do we know the times that those are allowed and?
Assistant Manager Parker, do you want to give an update on the vending trucks?
I know they have to get a business license while he's thinking about that. I, too, offhand, I know we're seeing if Mr. Parker has that answer, but they do have to get a permit to operate in town, and, but I don't know what that restriction is myself.
Yeah, well, I would say this, that I know that one came flying through here, I think, on the way over to Trustee Barry's house the other night, at about five minutes to nine, with the music blaring, and I just thought that was a little bit late. And then the second item that I wanted to mention is that I'd like to wish my wife a happy anniversary tomorrow. 38 years, to me, it's 38 years. To her, it might feel longer, but happy anniversary.
Well, congratulations.
So, thank you.
And I think Assistant Manager Parker is available now?
Yeah, so I was also having trouble with the two buttons for mute. So I think I was trying to say, at the same time that Manager May was saying, probably about the same thing, that permits are issued through the clerk's office, and so we can certainly double-check with Deputy Clerk Richards, though I personally don't know what the restrictions are in terms of times for those. But we can certainly connect with her and send out an email to the board.
Okay. And is it possible to, in the future, pass an ordinance that he has to play different music every five minutes instead of the same thing over and over? And I do know we restricted the use of the one truck that, by the train station, to the north side of the train station for not past noon or 1:00.
Yeah, their business was a breakfast-based business, and their interest was in the morning, but they might have an available window bigger than that, but that's all they were interested in.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for everyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I met a fire inspector from Addison Fire Department over the weekend, and I was asking if he knew any of our guys, and he said, the only good guy I know over there, and the only guy I know, or said he was a good guy, was our chief Riley. So I felt very proud when he just melted that out in front of everyone. He said, I know Riley, he's a real good one. So I want to pass that on of how the other towns view our chief.
All right. Great, he's going to be unmanageable tomorrow now.
Thank you, Trustee Barry.
Yeah, well, other towns know what we know, so. And again, Trustee Barker, congratulations. Trustee Guzzo, hope you're doing well after your surgery. And seeing no other information, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
John Zemanek wants to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. The solicitor hours are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That's per the ordinance passed this past spring. And I'm looking at the ordinance for, it's called street food vendors, and ice cream trucks and similar trucks like that probably fall within this category. And it does state in the ordinance that the hours are 4:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I don't know if ice cream trucks fall in a different category or not, but this would appear to cover them.
All right, we'll have to look at that. I'm sure they probably fall in a different category. I haven't heard that music at 4:00 in the morning yet. So seeing no other, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Little.
I already had one.
Second, Nero.
Second Nero. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
The anniversary.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank everybody for participating tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.